Invader. Yes?
Emergency.
Okay. Number two, declarations of interest. Subsection one, any disposable pecuniary interest.
I'm not sure chairman if I have to declare because it was unfortunate that my name is mentioned in the facilitiation thing when it doesn't really go on past the first paragraph.
It's not pecuniary.
But it's an interest.
Well, that'll be, you can do it under section two if you want.
I'll leave it because it's not mine. I'll leave it then.
Number three, subsection one, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday 13th of September. councillor Brooks?
As I had a couple of... I didn't think we had to stand up as a deputy, but I might be wrong. It's for the mayor's change. Okay, well, no, no, I don't have a problem, but I just from past. Anyway, yes, sorry, I had a problem with the minutes and I'm now having a problem getting my comments, which was supposed to speed up and stop me from waffling, so if you could just bear with me one second. I've lost my comments.
Well, do you want me to help? You raised 491173, about the amount of the budget we were setting up.
No, it's, yeah, it's not, I've got it now. And basically, I was unhappy that the councillor's question is not recorded and the response, it is normal that the question is recorded and the response.
The only reason that wasn't is because it was included in your pack last month. It was given as a paper. The response, the question and the answer.
Okay, I know if that's, but that will get, that stays with the minutes. Yeah, that's fine, I just didn't want to ask the question and not have it recorded. And then there's the other thing, which you've assured me will happen in the future, but the revised approved expenditure from the promotions of Oaken Working Group has not been minuted. And... And also, very importantly, we don't know from the minutes who we actually co-opted, so the names of the co-opted candidates need to be inserted into the minutes.
Which one are we on now?
That's the last minute. And then I have a, sorry, I can, I pause. Yeah, well, it's a legal thing that we really need to show.
That will be amended then?
Yes, please, so it's both in there. Thank you. And then the other thing is just a thing which obviously I have mentioned in email. The minutes are supposed to just record the business of the council and these minutes, in my opinion, are the worst I've ever seen. And that refers to the bulk of the first page, which has, to me, quite a mess about the chairman's comments towards me and comments which apparently I made outside the meeting. And I don't think that should happen again. Also, at the bottom of the minutes, there's a note alleging to my conduct, the minutes have never been a place where it's reported of members' conduct or alleged conduct. So I would like that to be deleted, that's my proposal, that that is deleted. I can't amend now all that stuff that the chairman's written in the first part, but I would hope that that's not going to happen again in the future because it wasn't really council business. But I would like to propose that the note at the bottom of the minutes is struck off the record. Please, that's my proposal for them.
Well, I think it should stand because that's what happens.
But then don't minit other people's conduct, you know, the other people were told off in that meeting.
If anyone breaches the code of conduct, we will record it.
But then it shouldn't, it's not in the minutes. If you feel I've breached the code of conduct, then it should be reported as a separate matter by the clerk to the monitoring officer. It is supposed to be a record about business, not a report on members. You know, that's all I'm saying is that I would, I'd make a proposal that that note is struck. If no one seconds it, then I have to accept it, but I think it's wrong.
I'll say, because I mustn't ask, we raised, not that particular question, but in the working group 48817, we go into a lot of detail of who said what and where, which we don't normally do, we don't normally list who said what and where for and what allegations were thrown about. We just seem to have picked out that section there and I know some members feel that the councillor involved, this is how they're going to deal with him, and it's the wrong way, it is the wrong way. We didn't list who said what in any of that, the minutes, and we don't think we should be risking who said what either.
There's law things written in 48817.
Exactly, I think there should be.
Right, well, we've got a proposal.
I was second that one as well, that that whole section is struck.
Councillor, I love it.
Well, where something's happened in the minutes, so for instance, I raised a point on the bottom of page one, where I did point out that there was, Martin wasn't using the recording table and that's been documented, it happened, it's a fact, it's happened in the minutes. And in the past, when something's happened in the minutes, we said we must include it. So I believe there's nothing wrong with that. Where councillor, where it says councillor Brooks responded by calling the chair a bully, that is a fact, it happened, it happened at that point in time. So there, I haven't got any issues with that, but I can see the point which Martin raised, where at the bottom where it says, this is quite ambiguous. There is notice that councillor Brooks repeatedly did not comply with standing orders and that he repeatedly refused to follow the council's instructions. Well, if it had been minuted at this point here on 48317, for instance, councillor Brooks wouldn't desist from talking about things when on the agenda or specific to this. It would be more appropriate to put it there, so it would give an evidential base. That is, you could write that about anybody, so that is the only bit where I'd say if you're going to strike it, strike out the final comment. But the bits where they've been made pertinent to a specific agenda item, they've been captured against that agenda item, they may be pertinent in the future if there was a conduct complaint. So from my opinion, they should be retained in that part, but the final comment should be taken out. But that's my interpretation.
Yeah, I'm happy for that, but what I would like to agree with councillor Ronley is that what was said in that first part was not an agenda item. You know, it was a report about the working group, not a report on his opinion of what is alleged I said and that was the issue, so I would hope that that, you know, it'd be, yes, I did call him a bully because that's how I feel and I don't mind that minitity. But if he hadn't have done all that, reading out people's emails which had nothing to do with the working group, I wouldn't have come to say that in a public meeting, so I'm not trying to hide it, I'm just trying to point out that it wasn't council business. And I would stick by that, stick by that, and we're not going to win that. So we just stick that the end note is removed and I would be happy with that if everybody wants. We've had it proposed and seconded at the end note.
The proposal in second is that we strike out the end part.
Yeah, there's a note, the note.
All those invaders.
As I said, I could have applied to many people at last meeting, it was dreadful.
We're just going to, so.
Apologies, chairman. Apologies, yes.
That's fine, thank you. Well.
So you need to initial each page and then initially amend it somewhere.
That was a proposal to accept the changes, you proposed to me, exactly.
That's just, that's with a amendment, that we're going to name, we're going to name the candidates on 50572 and track the final comments.
We might just go and check what we did with our budget.
Yes, there was a query on that.
Yeah, the budget for the promotions of working open, that needs to be minited. We can put a comment sign and it can be added later.
Sorry, you want to assign me there, I missed that. So do we know what the budget is then?
It was, it also was with the scrolls and I thought it was less than, I thought it was, was it £500 per pair, wasn't it? Yeah, £500 per pair, so where it said £1,000 on the budget, it should be whatever, just the scrolls value one, which I think was, whatever it is.
Amendment.
Two for £500.
Two for £500, yeah.
The other point I was trying to raise was the, there was expenditure revised for the, I believe it's the late night shopping expenditure and that's not being clearly defined how much.
Right, the late night shopping expenditure was...
Has it changed?
It's in the promotional list to the working group values, the late night shopping budget was £150 for outside and £250 for inside and the council, because it was challenged at the meeting, did actually vote to accept over those, it's not minuted. So it needs to be added in that the PWD was voted on and the budget was accepted of those values.
Am I happy with that?
Now you've explained it. £150 outside and £250 inside.
And that was agreed.
Initially we just accepted the document, but then we did a proposal in the late night and it was, it was in that actually. It was carried through.
Right, part two then of the minutes, which is the extraordinary meeting held on Monday 18th of September 2017. That's all two of your papers. And then the action point for us councillors, Hayley and Woodbury, would give our response, which was duly sent. So are we unhappy with those minutes?
Yeah, I think I proposed accept those.
Can I second that? Can I vote?
I believe I can't vote on the...
No, you were, oh, well, you were.
I was only on the first.
You were, you were on the first.
Yeah, on the set.
It's like you were welcome to.
Yeah, on the set, I say on the set, it's like on the first half. Kind of.
So who do you vote on this one then?
It was proposed and we seconded it and we proposed to have the votes.
David wasn't here, Joyce was here.
Councillor Ronley wasn't there.
Oh, sorry.
And Joyce as well.
It's just that for you four, Martin.
Yeah.
Yes, that's five, five four and two extensions. Joyce and David.
No, we weren't here, we went to the meeting. So probably we thought, we've got eight people in here.
Yeah, there's something wrong there. I think it's six and two. Did I look at that? There's the chairman's report, the... Any other members' reports?
May I just raise that, what it is, I put two reports on the desk this evening. So rather than have to read them out, I put them there. One is the one, the Christmas scenario, which I put on there. So we don't need to take any questions tonight, you can have a look through that and that is not a good thing. Another one is a report on the World War One Commemoration Committee. Now, it was a question raised, but what it is, I did ask that the, an event that went off at the church, which was for the schools, I thought it would be interesting for the councillors to see what that event was. So it wasn't intended to cause confusion, but I think it did. But the commemoration committee have been doing things for schools as part of the national programme and that was one of the events they did. Important thing just to note here that the committee, the World War One Commemoration Committee, the chairman said his thanks to the town council for supporting the play that's being planned for next year. There are plans, in answer to your question now, about doing another schools event next year. I will ask at the next commemoration committee if any councillors could attend it, but it would be ironed by only. It's not gen, it wasn't generally open to the public, but it was literally just to schoolchildren and teachers. But it was, oh, I went, it was actually, it wasn't a pity. I was, yeah, I was, yeah.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you. So after that, on the reports. Councillor Smith, it's a bit of a bad one. Clark's report.
Yeah, not much on there, I suppose, just to let them know the service will be, they're not performing until Tuesday, but they're going to be arriving, there'll be a few, don't be alarmed if you see a few caravans on Saturday night. I've booked a site inspection with the environmental officer at RCC and they've had all their documentation and Week 10 have had a work order for works that need to be carried out. David said that some of the work, they've already made a start from there.
They have, they have made, done some of the, you know, patching, but I did notice tonight when I walked the dog, that under the big swing, they pulled it up again. The safety, sorry, safety services, they keep pulling it up. Just by, I've got a camera there.
Right, moving on then, number seven, the dedication part. Mr Simpson on the same one, just observing.
Sorry, chairman, just to say I was a bit late, but Oliver Bird sends his apologies, he's had a very busy day. He would have been second line.
Right, okay. Do you want to note it? Right, number eight, working groups, we've got one from the neighbourhood plan steering. I think it's mainly engagement with builders. We've had one or two presentations. Yes, I can't, I don't know whether I can answer any questions.
No, but it's just general comment for the whole council. There's things that I've seen and obviously comments being made. It almost seems like the neighbourhood plan has come to a slowdown, you say, and also we don't have the correct number of representation on the neighbourhood plan. And I'm not happy by, I'd say each time, these rolling reports are not actually giving us what is going on. We were told that the chairman is likely to be coming to this meeting, but he's not here. So I'm just wondering as deputy chairman, whether you could look into it with the clerk and actually get an update report back to the council of what the situation is. We were told that the local clerk was going to apply for a grant before he left to cover quite a considerable amount of expenses. We had no report of the situation of that. So if you could note that and maybe at the next meeting, if we could have a more detailed report of the current situation, you know, without mentioning them, some parish councillors who should be involved from Bali for, actually find that it's a bit of a joke, is the words that they told me. So that's all I would say.
I want to make sure the chairman reviewed that, but...
Yes, of course, but I can only do that.
I can comment on the grant, yes, Mr Plum did apply for the grant and I think we still have one.
He hasn't applied for.
I did speak to the chairman about the meeting with builders because some would like to see us, but it was thought inviolable and of course there's a degree of caution even when the steering group meets builders because there can be conflicts of interest. And obviously the builders at the moment are very keen to state their claims to move that line forward for building purposes. And also the steering group are mindful of the fact that their views and that coming from the local plan are not totally in sync, and I have that in my opinion as well, there's different views on it. But we'll note what has been said.
I note such and I noted the question you see about they didn't even know how the plan sits with the neighbourhood plan and you would think they would know. I believe the chairman sent a question asking for that.
Well, yeah, again, if I, I mean, the only thing I can say to that is we did meet the leader and deputy leader two or three weeks ago and this was one of the things on the agenda. And they have reinforced the fact that they're happy that there is liaison with the planning directorate manager and the neighbourhood plan to, you know, make sure there's plenty of dialogue.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a bit confused, but touching the history. Chris Park was appointed chairman, councillor A Bellet elected as OTC representative. That's so interesting. It's this year.
Yeah, that did happen.
Yes, that was right, and he did participate. He did take part, there was an event, I won't say that here, but of course councillor Bennett is no longer councillor Bennett. And he has left. And at the next meeting, I'm hoping the park will put on the agenda that we bolster up the working groups because we have vacancies, because councillor Bennett left and one of the others have left. And I think it's good that we've left it a month really because it gives the new councillors a chance to see what the working groups were about. But I would be very hopeful next month we are filling all the vacancies. Right, so can we move on then? Statement accounts, the panelists, Steve.
That's the end.
Sorry. Did you say sorry?
I think, oh yeah.
I'm looking forward to the new friends, just having their space.
Sorry, on the statement accounts, it was just a query, that's not a big deal. It says in the audit report about a petty cash ceiling limit of £200, yeah, in this statement accounts we deal with a higher amount of £250. Is that moved on and, or?
Had to increase it because we had a rather expensive, shall I say, franking machine and the lease expired, we had it for seven years and expired this year. And it was agreed that we weren't going to have used it again as it was costing us a lot of money. So unfortunately petty cash had to go up to pay for postage, basically.
Okay, so are we just going to lift that up for next year, the limit going forward? That's all my query because it seemed contrary to the audit statement.
Yes, it's going to have to stay, we'll get the stuff set up.
Yes, thanks for that. We'll note that it needs to be formally limited because the clerk does have a certain amount of discretion.
Yeah, I understand that, it's just that black and white statement, it seems confusing and I'm sure there was a perfect reason for it.
Yes, and some of my questions were very kindly answered by the clerk earlier on today, which was very nice. But I still have an issue with an expenses payment to the chairman. This business of telling me that we have a standing order that says, well, we can just, I don't mean no offence, but the clerk, the council gave that authority. You know, we, as a council, we used to have to approve things and that is the law. And we gave the clerk many years ago, emergency powers to £500 because once again, a tree fell down. Under the chairman who is no longer with us, this was put up to £5,000, but the words urgent or emergency have been removed. And I'm slightly annoyed as people know that sometimes something comes to council and we have to approve it, then when it doesn't, I'm told financial regulation, whatever, covers it. But I think that regulation needs to be looked at. Regulations for finances haven't been reviewed since January 2016, if the date is correct on the bean. And it's no disrespect to anyone in the office, but I think that, you know, £5,000 is fine if it's an emergency, like when the tree fell down, just to do the cleanup because you can't call a council meeting and leave a tree for three days in a row. So that's what an emergency is, everything else is not. And I don't get how we can, I've been told that Mrs Lewis had all her expenses approved by council at the last meeting because she wasn't a member of the council and that the councillor agreed in the budget for councillors to have it. Now, we've been told, and I have it on recording, at the last budget presentation that just because we put a figure in the budget, it doesn't mean we've approved spending it. So I know it's only a little bit of money, but we've got to sort it out so that we don't get this friction where somebody has approval, somebody doesn't and then when I complain or someone else, we're told, well, the clerk has powers to do it. It puts the clerk in a very unacceptable position. So I would like that. And I'd also like to know this evening what the expenses were for, that's all. It just says mileage expense, was it for training for the council or was it for what? That's on that point, so I'm not being awkward, it's, we have to account for public money.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, you've made the point. Can the clerk answer what the expenses were for?
The one, the mileage for Michael was for a visit to Stockham Prison and the other was for training. What I will say is, in all the years I've been here, if we've had in-house training or mileage expenses for councillors, it's never come in front of us, it's never come to the, for the agenda item. With our flag of standing orders and our flag of regulations rather, there is a training budget and members, if they so wish, can have training and claim reasonable mileage or public transport.
Maybe I'm confusing it with the ones that, when we bring yours, that's why I think it all needs sorting because if we had to bring yours, why not councillors? That's my...
No, well, you've been on a course as well. I've been, yeah, I've been on a couple of courses, Joyce and I self control.
I have one other point.
We didn't, I didn't want to claiming expenses or mileage, I could have, I just didn't bother. And on Michael's expenses, if he attended training, then it's covered under those, it's covered under cash expenses. If he's gone to an event where he's been invited as the mayor, that should have come out of his chairman's allowance. So I presume that would have been deducted from the chairman's allowance, can you? Yes, because you can't claim mileage saying that if he's been invited as passive mayor, that's what the chairman's allowance is for, to cover counter pocket expenses, which would include mileage, donations, because you put money in a donation thing, you don't get receipt, you can still claim it back to claim that back. So training, generally expenses, because all of us can do that. But if I get invited to something as councillor and I choose to go, I have no right to claim any expenses, mileage or other. But the chairman has got the allowance, so the Stockham Prison should have come out of the chairman's allowance. I'm sure it has, when you let it across, I'm sure it will be let across.
Yes, I'm sure that will be the case. It's a bit of a financial regulation, yeah, just to say. And I think it's 18 and five or something. The general rule for us is 18.1 and that is the one I've quoted. Councillor Brooks?
And I didn't get the full clarification on the last point I wanted to raise because it's the first time I've ever seen it. We paid for data out, non, sorry, I've written it down, non-contract data from Millennium Computers. We seem to, and I know Alison said to me that in an email that we're going to bring it to council soon because contracts are up, but we seem to be paying lots of fits and pieces to Millennium all over the place and this one is very, very new to me because I've never ever seen us being out of contract data. But what is it, Alison, is it?
It's for the, it's for the backup. But when all the contracts came to council, it was, when the contracts were came back and there was a bit of a question mark with Millennium because of the website and what we're going to do. So that needs to come back. So at the moment we are out of contract with them because we didn't resolve.
Oh, that's what it means.
So we were going to look into maybe changing our supplier, as it happens, we stayed with Millennium. But what it means is so it's the monthly backup system, but then obviously because we're out of contract, we're paying it just slightly higher rates.
Three times, you know.
I think it was.
What I'm concerned about is that, and that's not saying you're going to forget, but if that is just for what we've used so far, I'm concerned because either you or the administrator is doing a very good job of piling data on, which is like all the agendas from the past and whatever. Is that bill going to get bigger and bigger? That's my fear because it's data usage.
It's just that the two computers get backed up every now and then. It's just the, it's just that the two computers get backed up every night. It won't be, I can double check with them, I don't know if it's not gone up due to volume in the past, if that makes sense, it's gone up in figures because.
I don't think they deserve paying at all, because Alison knows how many times the family have promised me, and they still haven't come back with the instructions of how to do it. So only by the goodwill of a member of council am I getting any emails at all, and I just think it's disgraceful. They've told me they would send me the details, I could do it myself, nothing has come, and that's several weeks ago now.
Well, it's disappointing, I mean, personally, I had issues as well, but they came to my house and sorted it.
To do that.
And they sorted it in ten minutes.
I sorted my own.
Well, they were going to send me the instructions of how to do it.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're in danger of depressing it.
No, it's much of principle, we should pay them if they're not fulfilling their work.
Well, they obviously are on this.
Well, can I say, I mean, two, two members have raised issues here. I think you should perhaps write to the clerk, you know, addressing that. And if you feel there are improvements that can be made, let us know. Okay, right, right. Finally, can I just say on the financial regulations, the chairman and I have gone through them and we have made one or two recommendations, but we've got a slight backlog and one or two things have been deferred to the next meeting. But, you know, if you have issues with them, please raise them next month, and rather than sort of then carrying on.
I would just like that word, but urgent or emergency only.
Well, we can look at the time, you know, I guess it's the chance. So can we approve these apps, can I propose it, second up?
Nick.
Nick, yeah, all in favour? Against? Staying?
abstained.
Two extensions, right, thank you. Right, number ten, chamber furniture, I'm sure we all like to know this one. Paul, you have to see, councillor Lowe.
Yeah, I mean, the paper speaks for itself, 2014 is what it originally looked at, I've revisited it, because one of the main reasons I revisited, I had a meeting in here the other day with one of the many charity organisations that we let use the chamber, and there was only four of us at the meeting. And we needed binoculars to see each other across the table. And having looked into it, I mean, for the value that's on there, not only could we get some more appropriate professional furniture, which would be then flexible enough to adapt to different sized groups, it'd also be stackable, which is one of the cop's big cost savings here, rather than being trying to be clever with cancelling the furniture and all the rest of it. And the chair thing, on there it says budget chair, £25 for fifteen, this is an example of the chair.
All right.
All right, this is, this is a very nice chair. Do you remember, did you enjoy it? Just to demonstrate that it works, that's the chair in operation, so you know, I'm not, my head is above the carpet, as I say. I did a quick check, for anyone who's interested, I'll just pass a couple of these round. If we wanted to go for a more modern looking style chair, which you'd be looking at paying £400 for the same fifteen. And that's what it is really, pretty straightforward, I think.
They, they bend it with people like.
No, only, this, the black ones is what I quoted this. These are the budget ones.
Is that what's, that's its curve, that's curved, that's a little bit at the side of.
So so fifteen chairs like this I can get for £25. And they stand.
Altogether.
Altogether, twenty-five pounds for the lot.
No.
Yes, might just have enough quick. So 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 that's what it is, and I mean, and the thing is, I looked at the measurements and Vince Howard and others in the past, I think even Adam Walters involved, did various measurements, and the measurements were along the same lines as what they had done. And with a little bit of sensible planning and operating, we would still be able to get it in here. The important thing to note from the paper is that all capitals would need to be facing each other or the chair, and it would be open at the back there. So all members of the public would then be able to see straight at the centre, rather than having our backs to members of the public. And also, we've looked at the measuring space for what we had at the moment, and because of our layout, we we have small areas with the new tables, everyone would have a guaranteed minimum size of what's been stated on our eight hundred mil by six hundred mil. Okay?
Could I ask about the chairs?
You can do, but it's non-negotiable.
Look, I've seen that round before, and the actual way the joiner to the chair thing, not all that brilliant, that bit there, no, 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 seriously.
Well, I'm seventeen stone, so it's.
It's when you tip that, you know, tip that.
Well, well, all all working practices on chairs is not my responsibility, budget chairs is.
Thank you, and all I wanted to know is with the new proposal, which fantastic, makes a lot of sense, what's happening with the recording spaces? Because it's not mentioned in the plan, so is that on?
It would stay as it is, it would, I hadn't taken, that to me is what the cap would agree, it wouldn't impact on that. It would pretty much still be in this format, it might be a bit tired of it, but a bit of clever work, and because if we go for everything that's on the paper.
Hang on, please.
If we go for everything that's on the paper, which is what my proposal is, is that the screen would be a drop down screen from there, that would come down to a need it. The projector would be hanging from the ceiling and would be cabled in. And that, and I've put some indicative costs on what the cabling and the junction boxes would cost. And because I didn't get hold of them quite cheaply myself, I put down prices from the firms I've spoken to, you know, paved D M I box and trunking, the cable, the trunking and the mounting box, £50. If we go to a firm to do it, they'd probably be looking at three, four hundred pounds.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, you know that, we're being in IT, so so if I've costed everything out, alls it would need to be is that we have to get an electrician in to wire it in, and our own contractor to bolt it to the ceiling.
Thank you.
Can I just say?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
On this chair?
Uh, two, no, two things really, the tables, do they have a modest panel?
No.
I can leave them.
Do these?
They do, R C C. And the others.
Is that because they're foldable? You can have modesty panels, you can buy them as an extra if you really wanted to. But I I looked at it, and I'm looking at how close people are going to be, and I was going to focus on the agendas person.
Maybe you'd have to go down that path.
Uh, can I also ask or suggest that when we get rid of these tables, we go to some reputable firm like Tennants for a quote, these are very good tables.
Yes, they are.
Sorry?
Yes, fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, it went elsewhere, and we're going to almost take it away, and you pay me £10 to take them away, like in the past. And really and truly, we need a good antique dealer type, like Tennants, to give us a quote on these tables.
Well, I'm sure councillor Lowe is a firewood dot com.
I was going to suggest we donate them for the Lion's Firework on fire, but because it's ground wood and then, they're too big. But anyway, moving on. I I think it's wonderful, and something the council was told to do back in 2009 in a report, that this was not suitable to meeting as it was. So but I do have one slight issue with a monitor and screen in this small room. It's mainly the definition, and also if we're going to be in a horseshoe shape that way under a monitor screen up there, the chairman wouldn't be able to see it and people surrounding the chairman. And what I thought, because they are very reasonably priced now, is is that we go for on a fixed pole the similar type size monitors that they have at R C C, which can plug into a laptop, and it's clearly put on a H D screen for us. And you know, it it just, it's better. I find that when we got this, I've been to planning and things, and it's like, probably some books and it's all, I know we're going to have it on there, but it's just not clear to see what's on it, that's all. So it's just a suggestion that that, you know, we agree what it is, but I would have liked to have, and I'm very wary that these things now take a month before they can come back to council for anything. That we could have looked into that alternative, so that the people sitting there, you know, we could save money on paper. Wouldn't need these printed, because the laptop would be there showing the agenda items and all sorts, be modern.
Right.
So I'm, I I have no, I have no problem with everything else, I just have a slight problem with a screen up there and a monitor that's not.
We, in actual fact, I mean, we we could quite easily, you could bin that completely and that, and you could have a widescreen television on this wall, you could have a widescreen television on a couple of rooms.
Yeah, don't have to be in the middle.
A widescreen television, I can tell you, because naturally, you can buy any widescreen television from PC World or from any outlet. And you're looking at a budget for a decent size, one of a decent quality, because we've just done this at work, you're looking at in the re, we bought some quite cheap, we bought ten, so we looked at £550, but realistically, we'd be looking at about £800. So if the if the if the council choose to go down that route, it can be.
There's not that big of a, how big are they?
Widescreen, probably about that wide.
Five inch screen for a thousand.
That's not big enough.
Uh, well, well, we say that on read up, but I mean, we have been managing with a monitor and a projector for X amount of years in this room, and at the end of the day, I mean, it could be that it's still worth popping in, because that's, at a monitor, the projector screen at £166, we've already got that beast there, is actually quite negligible, and we could always look at another item, where we do have some, bringing in some screens, some TVs.
Or one.
Or or one, having them all mounted. So I wouldn't dismiss that, because I think we'll always go back to a screen and that, because we've got that, so we need to take use of that, because that costs three hundred pounds.
That'd be on a pile up there.
I told them, I was going to say my proposals have been accepted still, but, sorry, you should say that.
When it's on that screen, even on that screen, you cannot see the small print, right? So we don't want a small screen, even there, there and there, if we can't read the print.
It's the definition, though, on that, isn't it? It's a bit woolly, I don't think.
Yeah, but but the ones down at R C C, you can't even, on those big side screens, you can't see.
Well, it's not on here anyway, so it doesn't matter.
No, we want, we want a drop down screen, sorry.
Well, the proposal is we consider the report, which I think we have done, make decisions that's appropriate. Do we want to give the author a bit of latitude in?
Well, he's proposed it, that's.
Yeah, sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna propose the paper as it's written, because I still think we'll be using a projector screen for that, for different venues. And then the TV may go.
I I have a comment just about the finance, because we we we've got a thing saying that Greggs is going to do it, but we don't know how much, so could we, does Adam have an idea, because we need to authorize.
Twenty pounds an hour.
How many hours do you think it would take? Because we could give double the budget, but it's important that we give.
I bet you're looking at about no more than ten hours' work, maybe only five.
So do we give him two days or something, just in case?
All all you've got to do is you've got to run trunking up this wall out there.
Yeah.
That's about an hour's work, and then you've got to run electricity from here up to there, which is a couple of hours' work. So I would say that you're probably looking at two, even if you put another £500 in tops, I think, because if.
Can we put that, put that in, so there's.
Electric, yes, good electricity, so £500 more just than that, but.
Right, so we've got the proposal in the second, they're subject to an, up to an additional £500 for installation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
Done, well, I'd like to thank. That's a very good deal, the chairs in particular, even if they only lasted a few years, it's still a good deal, only a couple of hours.
I'm gonna, I'll say it next, just to test it.
Number one.
No, you're going to be round, I'll have to take that for that as well. I thought a lot of my children.
Councillor Lucas?
Yes, chairman, I think on reflection, we'll defer this, because what's the point in discussing it when we haven't got the structure right yet? If you see what I mean, so can we defer it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's a lot more work.
Yes, I mean, in the meantime, obviously, the website does give all the.
Yeah, but not everybody, don't keep saying the website, not everybody reads the website.
All our details are on three notice boards in the town, probably one in the toilet as well.
Uh, sorry, chairman, but it doesn't give the exact what everybody does. And all the committees that we've got, it doesn't give us all that information.
Well, hopefully next month, we'll know all the subcommittees and working groups and.
I hope so, by by now, yes, the structures.
Do I have a proposal to defer?
I'll defer, yeah, I would defer.
Second up, second up, all in favour of deferring?
So just ten minutes.
Thank you.
I was. I'm going to talk on this, I'm going on. And I'm sure you'll. But what the clerk is.
All our reports in the past have done, have been done by symbiosis. And I did speak to Stuart Kidd, the forestry officer. And he did say to me that the reports, trees only really need to be done in two or three years, he said today. And a lot depends on basically the size of them, but he went from maybe two or three years. And this is something you, obviously you do want to have for your.
Well, I just to say that I was criticized in the last few weeks of being tree warden and not not doing my job. But when we went onto Royce's recreational ground with the forestry officer, he told me about the the system we've got at Rockhampton County Council. I gave it to Alison, and because of fair, fair amount of work, and I'm defending the clerk on this, that it's only just come to light, it's only just been approved, brought to the council, can I say that? I know about it. The forestry officer was very enthusiastic, it will be done properly, it is local. And we don't have to have symbiosis and arrange for a time for it to all to be done, it's very difficult. Now symbiosis has given, two years ago, I think it was, I meant to bring it with me, their survey, but we've had change of clerk, change of council, change of this, change of that. And the the tree warden of this parish and the clerk have worked jolly hard on this report, okay?
And they.
Right.
I I've just made my point.
They're charging about £36 an hour, and he said he, which I I think will be considerable saving to what we pay symbiosis, and I think, as Joyce has said, they are local, they know, they do know the history of some of our trees.
Yes, of course they do.
And we're going to get a free quote.
Um, yes, you said it.
A free quote.
Yeah, by, um, we have, we have plans of all the trees we've tagged on, and he's happy, Stuart's happy to to give us some kind of quote for all our sites.
And we've got an expectation of a saving.
Oh, absolutely.
Which seems a bit of a mess, right, and councillor Brooks?
Yes, I'd like to thank the clerk and the tree warden for this wonderful report, it's about time.
I'm sorry, it's an apology, not it's about time.
No, it is about time, councillor Lucas, and I'm not arguing, and don't interrupt me, please, or we'll have to be noted about you. And anyway, that's my sense of humour. Yes, and what I would like to see is that this is done pretty urgently, because we're probably going to have another dreadful winter. And every time it happens, we we have a pretty bad situation with trees lately. We set a budget for this year, which was pretty random, because I sat next to councillor Lucas, and we just said, what do you want? And that was basically how it got put in the budget, and we hadn't really done anything major this year, so I was hoping that the clerk could arrange this so that the reports are ready, that we can approve work that's required to be done, because there's a lot of work to be done. We've got a tree on the ground in Barleyford Field, just that it's tucked on the side, it's forgotten about. And then we know how to set the budget for the next year, because I think by the time this report could be completed, we will be considering next year's budget again, which probably October, November, December, I don't know. And so I I, that's what I read in a in a report, we set our budget in October for next year, you know, we start from it. So there is an urgency to make sure that we know what's going on and we get to do it. And I fully support the go ahead of this, but if it's done urgently. You want to come on?
Well, only only to say that a tree on the ground is not dangerous, and it's very good for hedgehogs and ants and what have you. But I echo with what councillor Brooks has just said, the crack willow at.
You're a cat's fur.
The crack willow at Willow Crescent.
On the Willow Crescent.
It is quite, quite dangerous, and. It is quite, quite dangerous and the sooner the better, please.
Well, we've got a recommendation, I'm sorry.
I, I've just, like, sorry, um, it makes sense, I don't, I'm missing the point of this report. Why we're debating a previous report, because I just read this as we recommend that we get the free quotes. And then I guess you make a decision, I, I don't understand what I'm missing, so if someone could help me or advise me that I'm not missing any of this. Okay, right, thank you.
Right, yes, a recommendation, we get a quote.
Yeah.
Um, I would, chairman, I'd propose that we accept the report and that we instruct the clerk to investigate further for a free non-blockaded quote or three seconds as per. Counselor Brooks, seconding for one moment.
With the comment of, if you're doing it speedily, please.
Uh, well, how quickly can you do it? Yeah, let's, let's just do what the paper says and then you can, I think it's the work afterwards, it needs to be done. If you find any. Right, okay, number thirteen, financial reserves banking accounts, I'll speak to this, um. Uh, I went in the Melton Building Society some three months ago and, um, checked that they can take accounts. I've got all the various forms, um, unfortunately, it's been a bit delayed, but here we have it before us. Um, the recommendation is we put up to eighty-five thousand on deposit with the Melton business. Um, savings account, they've got a small rate of interest. Um, whereas at the moment, it's with HSBC and I don't think we're getting any interest. Um, but more importantly, it's eighty-five thousand that has, um, sort of a safety net around it. Right, councillor Brooks?
Yes, I'm, I was very pleased that this has come to council and I will be proposing that we support it. It's been probably two to three years that this has been floating around, um, because it was, Richard said he was gonna look into it. Um, so, but I would like to point out as a member of the finance group to yourself, that there are other banks in the town as well. And we do need to spread a little bit more, you know, there's Barclays, there's Lloyds.
Some are there.
And some are there, you know, so they will all take accounts. So hopefully perhaps by the next meeting, we'll have at least two more accounts to safeguard the, the public money. But I would be happy to propose that this is, um, moved ahead. But anyone else might want to comment, I don't know.
We're presenting, we can't honey into the.
Just one place.
It's a start.
That's a, that's just like a song. Partly, part of a song, which has.
It's a start, let's do it.
Exactly, and to me, Melton, Melton is a very small place, it's a really good building society.
It's brilliant.
Sorry, Nick.
It's finally.
Now, now, it's, um, sorry, it's, it's not about the building society, it's about the protection that is offered by the government on the loss of the society. And that's on a per-account basis, not just a per-relationship basis. So we just need to clarify, bearing in mind that our on-deposit is two hundred and thirty-six thousand currently looking at this. That, that is enough adequate protection, but other than that, I think it's perfectly sound and rational suggestion.
Yes, yes, you know, maybe we'll look at other outlets as well as, as suggested, but.
Can I just, uh, sorry, can I just add that the mountain mory building society have been very, very, uh. Good to this town with charities. I know a long charity that has sponsored, and the mountain mory building society has sponsored for years, so please, let's give some back.
They don't give out money, do they?
Oh, no, I think that's, that's the important thing is we each, all we play with that.
It's a start.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
Right, number fourteen, review of policies and procedures. And, there's just a couple of tweaks.
Am I challenged? Yes, just, um, I know we, we spoke about the six-month rule and brought that in. Um, and I, I, I agree with what you're reading here, but I do think, uh, whatever says here on, um. Without prior arrangement with, with, of the council meeting. So if you want to bring something back, you can't do it because you've got to get the full council to agree to bring it back. That doesn't seem to make sense, in, in previous authorities I've been on, you've had to have, if I remember rightly, two-thirds. Of the members have to sign a letter to bring something back for, within six months.
Yes.
So the, the reason I say this is because as it is now, no, no member or members can bring an item back. But if it's something that needs bringing back that's important or urgent, if two-thirds of the members sign a letter. Then that would come back.
Buoyancy gone mad, huh?
Yeah, but that, that, there is no way of, of, and I think you do need to be able to bring something back, because you never know.
Or keep doing that, haven't we?
Yes.
Well, I just like to change, change the words just slightly, two, two-thirds to sign a letter of members. Right.
I'm, I'm a bit concerned, so the fact that we are asking once again in a very short period of time to change our standing orders, I can see why. But, you know, surely the six-month rule should apply to this, but the six-month rule is farcical. And that's why it was dumped by the council, because it got to the point that every time the chairman wanted to make a change or change a decision. We just have to keep putting our hand up every meeting, saying, let's change it. So I agree with, um, councillor Romney, that that needs to be looked at, because it is a bit farcical. And, you know, I read the internal audit report that says, because I said that, you know, I, from what I've learned from other places. That these reviews should happen at the AGM, but he's actually said it doesn't necessarily have to happen. But the problem we've got with our standing orders and regulations is that they are changed practically every meeting. And, you know, it's, it is not good. You, we need to get to the situation where somebody sits down and looks at the model code or whatever it's called. And they are brought to council just once a year, because when I look at that. The only reason it's back here tonight is because changes were made, but made in error. And that's all we keep doing and, um, I, and I'm not sure that we should even be considering this, because it's only considered last month. Well, so, you know, that's the problem and that's the farcical thing of the six-month rule. I understand why it's there, so you didn't get a councillor every month bringing back something that they didn't agree with. But it is, it does need to be looked at properly and sorted.
Pretty far, if I try to work out what you and the chairman have actually done here, because we voted on the six-month rule. It's not in our standing orders and all you're really doing here is saying you, we need to change standing orders to incorporate the six-month rule. If that's how I understand it, and that is correct, because that does need to come back to change it.
It is, sorry.
Um, it's, but my, it's just that, that the mechanism for members to bring things back is, is the third, the members of the council.
Yes, and, in, in defence, um, we keep being told, and I'm on most of these working groups, that we need to do the review. And then the review's out of date, it hasn't been done, so we've gone through them all, we've tried to, um, put in quite a bit of effort. It may be this one has got a bit ambiguous, uh, I mean, the suggestion might be that, I, hopefully next month, we'll bolster this working group up. And, um, get one or two more heads on it and, um, and try and get it so that it, um. Um, is a bit more appropriate, shall we say, in the lines of what we're suggesting, well, I think I end you there for this.
Yeah, just that, um, if things are going to happen next month, most during the coming vote. We can't then alter this again, because we've just agreed to this six-month thing, so why don't we leave this until after?
That's all that we need.
We've got the new structures, the new people and working groups. Sorry?
There's no disrespect, you can't leave it, because we've already decided that the six-month rule will now apply to this council. And what the, what the chairman and the vice-chair have, have, have worked out is that we need to change, to get that to work. You need to change standing, because at the moment, there's no standing orders.
After a week and a half.
Because the council's already voted that the six-month rule applies, I haven't minded a lot of time, it was out before. It, it happened, all we ever done, whenever we've had any wording, because it's our own standing orders. At any point in any, at a meeting, it's status and our standing orders. We can resolve to make a proposition to suspend a standing order and that is in our standing orders, so it actually makes a farcical about standing orders. So the six-month, as it stands at the moment, alls are be prepared to propose and accept on this paper is. And then maybe we could do this now before we continue talking about all the stuff in red, which I would completely blank and ignore. Um, is, I would propose that we accept the comments that the dignity of work, bullying and harassment, that there's no changes and the review date is now set, as of the thirteenth of September. And the grievance procedural, that there's no changes. And so from the paper, I would just propose the two last items, we accept that there's no reviews.
Defer the rest.
And then defer the rest.
Oh, second.
Can, can I just ask something from the clerk? When we used to do, but they didn't come so often, when the clerk was previously here. We, we, we used to bring standing orders to council for change. And then there was what was known as the calling-off period and an act was quoted where actually people sat, as we did now. And made changes to the proposal and then we had to come back to the next meeting for the final change. That seemed to have went by the way, and I can clearly remember that happening. Um, thi, this, I agree with Adam as well on the thing, that we do have that standing order, which says we can revoke anything, which I find a bit strange, but anyway. Um, but in our standing orders, we do already have something about the six-month and I read this, that we were just changing the wording. Um, because we voted on the six-month at the last meeting, I think, or something, so, I, i, they are in a total. Yeah, no, no disrespect, terminal, this, yes, thank you councillor Lucas. So, I mean, I know Peter doesn't want me to say that it's not worked, but i, i, it needs looking at from point A, as I've completely said. And go all the way through, and I've asked at many meetings and, and, you know, we have the model code of conduct and we go through it. Whether it's with the admin assistant or somebody, I'm not suggesting a qualified person out of a company. It just needs somebody with a fresh perspective to serve.
Yeah.
They can.
But I could second Adam's thing, if that's helpful as well.
I've got the standing orders here, we reviewed them in August, we went through them all. The trouble is with our standing orders, it's a bit of a hotchpotch. Um, there's not standing orders, there's the county council standing orders.
Hmm.
And we've got, we, yeah, yeah, um, but we've sort of, it seems over the years, there's been bits added to and taken away. So, um, I think that's why we sometimes have this situation. And then we give to NAP for advice and they say, well, they're not their standing orders.
Yeah.
And, so I, I think what has been proposed makes sense. Then when we bolster the committee in a month or two, they can look again at it and they'll get some more heads.
So they might, yeah, but I wish it was.
So we're ignoring all the red.
Second, yeah.
So just doing the white bits for the moment.
Yeah. I've read it down.
I'm, oh, we're starting.
All in favour?
Yes. Thank you.
I think I've lost somebody who's listening and realised the rubbish. I've got five of these every month. It is progress, we have progress to do as well.
Right, um, number fifteen, install vehicle restrictions, the entrance to Cuts Close, appendix J, councillor Low.
It's a pretty straightforward paper, all it is, uh, many, many years ago, there used to be a gate into Cuts Close, so vehicles couldn't just drive on there. This summer, where we have engaged some services where they could use the mark and they've been charged for it. We've then discovered the natural fact they've taken that as meaning they could use it whenever they want. So vehicles have been going on there. I think the council has been rather fortunate that we've not had people.
Oh, yeah.
Set up, you know, without being disrespectful, but you do get modern travellers that like to set on open green spaces. And I believe, do the council, and I've not done any costings on this, but do the council basically want to look at the possibility of putting up some bollards? We did it on the Church Street entrance to the old schoolhouse, those three bollards there, where the pedestrian access is on Cuts. Town council put those in to stop vehicles driving up to the old schoolhouse. And all this is, is that do we now want to look at, it would be protecting that green space, even though vehicles are allowed on there, on there with a green flag. But it has to be when we know that they're going on there. Um, and depending on what you go for, if you go for the fancy black bollards, the attractive Victorian style ones that are on Church Street, it would indicate it costs four hundred pounds each, plus installation. If you go for a simple drop-down or drop-in-to-the-ground ones, you're looking between fifty to two hundred pounds. But if the council wants us to go ahead, we instruct the clerk or the, the assistant for the clerk to maybe look at further inquiries and bring it back to them for all matters. So that's all it is.
Right, thank you, bye, yes, councillor Brooks.
Yeah, I, I fully agree, because, um, people do drive in there and, and they shouldn't. Um, but, um, I don't wanna see anything ugly and as a person who has helped to take out the bollards at the old school, which I campaigned to get. They are dreadful, they are cast iron and they're probably heavier than me. Um, so I was going to suggest this evening that possibly Adam or the clerk look at, um, very strong ones. Because there's no good having those floppy drop-down ones, because people will vandalise them. Um, if you go to what they know as the Buff Club in South Street, they've got setting concrete ones that pull up. Proper solid square metal ones, which could be painted, so when it's up, it looks attractive. I think we would probably only need two there and, and as councillor Low says, we are very lucky that people haven't took up residence there. Only about, I think, a year ago, they moved into Church Street car park and.
They did.
They could have moved into Cuts Close, but what does concern me is if we do do that part. There is then, of course, the part from the Burley Road car park, maybe we could get something along there, because we did have the incident with the wedding. With the van on it and, 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 um, a generator for a wedding reception and, you know. They just drove off the car park into it, so we, we maybe only need to look at the whole protection of the whole park there. Because if we, we wouldn't be able to afford to get rid of, you know, the travelling community if it happened.
Um, some years, uh, some months ago, of course, I wrote a paper about the heritage lottery. Uh, looking into this, this idea of new railings, et cetera. And it was thrown out because we couldn't employ a certain person to help me and Robert Clayton to get this heritage lottery grant, right? But I was envisioning, when it was the heritage lottery grant, that it would be nice gates like Melton, those sort of gates. However, Helen Woodhouse, who came from the Castle Improvement thing, did say to me. Please do not put railings from the castle railings to the end of the footpath. I don't know what the reason was, to the footpath on Burley Road car park, I don't know what the reason was, but she.